Okay, perfect. Let's go. It's 6:01 PM. At this time, I call order the April 28th, 2021 meeting of the Class of School Committee. Given Governor Baker's declaration of state of emergency in this Commonwealth, this otherwise in-person open meetings being held via Zoom. It is also being streamed live on Facebook and Class 143 TV. Would all committee members present please indicate so and roll call? Mrs. Coleri?
Present.
Mr. Kearney?
Present.
Mrs. Mar?
Present.
Mrs. St. Ange is not present as of 6:02 PM. We do have a quorum. I am present Craig McClellan. And so we'll proceed with the meeting. The first order of business as usual is public comment. This is a section of the meeting that's reserved for points of discussion or remarks from the community relative to issues that are not already on the agenda. So if anyone has any such points to make, please make them at this time using utilizing the Q and A feature on Zoom. I'll give folks an opportunity to do that. Okay, I don't see any. So before moving on to the superintendent's report, I see that Principal Sullivan and Farrell are here. Welcome. Dr. Sullivan, if you could present your report Superintendent Schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan.
I sure will. Thank you very much, Chairman McClellan, and thank you all for being here. And yes, I echo your thanks to have Principal Sullivan and Principal Farrell here. It's nice to see Caroline here adorning her Boston College sweatshirt, which is cool. I know that's where you'll be attending in the fall. So yeah, I thought we'd start with just a few pictures of kind of our last phase of reentry, if you will. As everyone knows, when we last left, we obviously had a break, but before break, we had two weeks of our middle school and high school being back full time in person, but our high school kids were going home for lunch and then zooming in to their last period class. Well, since we've come back, we've been full in person and a few things had to happen really in order to make that happen. Nothing drastic, but mainly around lunches and some of the things that we have here. I want to just bring you bring to your attention because there were some real, I think, impressive and very appreciated efforts by some community members, particularly Sarah McSweeney, who is a parent in Cohasset, has been very active in schools for quite a while. I know a long time Cohasset residents and resident, and she really helped us and worked very closely with our Director of Finance and Operations, Sue Owen, to procure this wonderful tent. You can see it's a 40 by 80 tent with sides and the amount of desks under there, which are, by the way, separated at six feet in every direction are 77. So it's a very large tent. And we're very thankful for Sarah's efforts and this is going to be really, really helpful as the weather gets better. And this will be, I think, a main dining area, but it certainly can be used for classes as well. Very helpful in getting all this going. This is what it looks like from the inside. Really impressive. Certainly fit for anything you'd want to do under this beautiful tent. This is what our gymnasium looks like now. Again, this is all to outfit our high school students, being able to have lunches inside when the weather might be inclement. And of course, our cafeteria is similarly outfitted. Other tents throughout the district, I don't have them all here, but the Deer Hill tents went up and the Ausgood tents went up. And of course, the middle of the high school tents, this is one of the tents at Deer Hill. You can just kind of see under the tent there a couple of the emergency management workers, Glenn Pratt and his team did a fabulous job of putting them up and they'll care for these tents. That large tent will be cared for by the organization that we had, they called Peak, they came in and put the tent. That's a that's a major tent. That's, that's not going anywhere. You know, until they take it down. It's very solidly put in. These are as well, but these are going to be cared for by our emergency management team. This is the other tent at Deer Hill. There's one in the courtyard too. It's not featured here. An Ausgood tent, there's some tents in the back as well, just like we had in the fall, and these will be really serviceable, particularly as the weather gets better. This is a tent in our courtyard in our middle high school. See signs of spring there. Took a little close up of those in a minute. This is another tent. This is in our middle school courtyard. You can see the way the chairs are situated under there. Another angle of that same tent, I believe. And then, yeah, just some signs of spring. It's nice. You know, we're all moving towards the better weather and the summer and those are always signs of hope. And so it was nice to see that the flowers kind of are dawning the tent areas. And you know, speaking of spring and the earth, this we had Earth Day this past week, and this is some of our high school crew who did some work cleaning there. I was looking, I thought I'm going to saw you, Caroline, but I guess you're not there. But it was very nice to see students getting involved at all levels to help clean the you know, the, the community, really. So we just stopped share for a second. So that was nice. And as I mentioned, we were back full in person at the the high school, which is also wonderful. We've changed our start, our stop times, I should say, our dismissal times to 2:40 at both, both buildings. And I think it was going okay. We're, it's a little slower getting out, but we knew that was going to happen. But it's, it's moving, moving well. So it's really nice to be able to say officially for the first time since March 13th of last year, we are all back full time, moving, moving forward. And that, that's wonderful. We, you know, in terms of COVID updates, we had, I was very pleased that we were in the green last week, last week as a community that shows that we're trending in the right direction. We did have an uptick, however, in some of our cases in the school community, stemming from things over break, but we, we do feel that that's going to sort of stem and the tide is going to even out. None of those contacts happened within the class of school buildings. That's important to know. And you know, we're looking forward to getting back to a place where we're sort of symbiotic with the community and able to move forward in that, in that regard. Protocols, I just want to make it really clear. You know, there's a lot of protocols out there that are being sent up by the governor in terms of masking and not masking, if you're vaccinated and all that. We are sticking with our protocols that we currently have in the schools. Something we've talked about with the, the leadership, and we want to make sure that everyone knows that, you know, we're, our protocols have been successful. You know, we haven't had any transmission that has been confirmed within our school buildings. Clearly, we've been able to keep things in check and we need to continue that. So, so we're not looking to change any of those protocols in terms of the schools. We are, however, as Desi has advised, we are observing their ruling regarding quarantining and how that applies to a close contact situation. As I'm sure all of you have seen and people who are watching out there, I've messaged this a few times that over, over the vacation week, Desi, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, working with the health groups in the state, came out with guidance regarding quarantining and how it applied to close contacts. Again, close contact is anyone who is within six feet or 15 minutes or longer, master unmasked of someone who is infectious or potentially infectious. And in other words, is tested positive for COVID-19 for 15 minutes or longer in duration. That's still the definition of a close contact. I want to be clear about that. However, what Desi has said is that if you are outside of three feet and you fit the close contact, you do not need to quarantine. In other words, to flip it around, you only need to quarantine if you are within three feet. Okay. And you're wearing, if you're wearing masks, that is, you know, that this, you have to be wearing a mask. Then you do not need to quarantine if you're within three feet. And what that means is because we're situated at a, you know, a minimum of three feet, this should very much cut down in our close contacts as we move forward. If, if it's the unfortunate situation comes about that we do have cases that have caused close contacts. We still will be identifying those folks as close contacts, sending home communication to families, advising them to test, but they do not have to quarantine if indeed they are outside of three feet and masked. Now, outside and in sports and whatnot, it's different. It's still, we still stick to the same rules we've had all along, which is, you know, six feet or within. And the bus, obviously, the in school is just the same as in the bus. So I know that can be confusing. It's a, it's a little bit blurry in its definition, but essentially unless you're within three feet in the schools, because everyone's going to be wearing masks in the schools, then you're not going to have to quarantine if you are deemed to close contact. That'll be important to us as we move forward. And I just wanted to mention before I get to Caroline and let her update about some of the senior activities. I'm sure she'll want to talk about and some of the things we have planned. We do have what's coming out from Safe Harbors and collaboration with our PSO called Wellness Wednesdays. And it's over the course of the next six Wednesdays, Safe Harbors will be emailing and posting ideas for parenting techniques, family management strategies, and communicating expectations with your children. And this all has to do with the reduction of adolescent substance use and trying to lower the rates of depression amongst the youth. So I'm really looking forward to that taking hold and that stems very nicely from our update from Nicole Belashi, I believe, at our last meeting or one of our last two school committee meetings. We had an interesting virtual job fair, which I will let Dr. Scollins update a little bit on because I thought that that has some nice potential, certainly in future years as well. So Dr. Scollins.
Great. We were fortunate enough to be part of a virtual career fair with diversity in ed, and that was on April 14th. I have to give Lisa Raden kudos for setting it all up. I've never done a virtual fair before, but we had a booth that we were decorated for with Cohasset information. We uploaded files. And so this was an international career fair, but in, it is a career fair that does target different, different populations so that we could really try and entice some people to come from more diverse backgrounds. It was, we had a few people that we spoke with and you kind of chat with them online, which is nice, but they actually visit your virtual booth. We had a meet and greet on the 12th and then the, the fair on Wednesday. It did not, there weren't any people that were reaching out to us that were for positions we had, but it was nice to make some connections with other people and to be part of this program. This program also has some other things that we can be part of where we'll be in their booklet and online. So as people are looking for positions in this area, we'll be listed. And we're looking for some other opportunities also where we can be at some different kinds of career fairs and really get our faces out there. I think that, you know, things are starting to open up, so we'll start to see more. But I think the virtual fair was very nice because it allowed people from all over to participate. So, so it's the beginning of, so it's very exciting.
It's wonderful. A lot of hopes for, for that and helping us moving forward. And for the committee's information, we have been working as a district to create a kind of collaborative definition of equity. Started with our, our leadership team and we were putting it out now and getting ideas from our faculty because equity and cultural response teaching is going to be such an important part of things we do moving forward. We know that. That's been exciting. And I'm happy to turn it over to our Superintendent School Committee Advisory Council Representative or liaison Caroline Patterson to talk a little bit about things that are happening in student, in the students world. And Caroline, may I mention some of the activities for seniors that are, that happened and that are upcoming? And if you don't, I'll mention some of them, but if you'd like to talk about them, you can and whatever else you want to update on. So welcome back from break, Caroline.
Thank you. Yeah. So in the weeks prior, we, the seniors had a hypnotist come, the one they've used in the past, and we were all kind of spread out in the auditorium and he had called people up and it's just funny seeing the kids like we've all gone to school with and you like know them. So seeing kind of their reactions to everything and he did a great job. Um, and it was funny too, how he was like having them as they were hypnotized, like saying stuff that they still had to be six feet apart and all this stuff and like their activities that they were like running and dancing around. So that was really exciting. And then another really positive thing that everyone really enjoyed was the pins bowling kind of field trip day. We got like arcade little like $10 arcade cards, which is really generous. So we all kind of got to use those bowling. They had these like fun kind of yard type like cornhole, cornhole games that it was just like a nice kind of break because just as like schools kind of picking up right now, because a lot of students will have exams in the next few weeks. So those AP exams still going to be in person, but I'm pretty sure a lot of them are at Ausgood. That's something that I heard today. So I'm sure we'll get kind of rules and everything about how that's going to work in the following weeks. So now that we're kind of back, fully back, like you said, everyone is adjusting fine. I think the one thing that I'm sure we'll kind of talk more and with Mr. Scott, because I know we've changed the schedule like so many times, but I think the thing students really are like craving is a break just because like the four classes back to back like, and then for seniors and juniors, like having that utility. So it's technically like five blocks. And then you eat at 110 or 115. It's just like for kids, like they find themselves who like just getting hungry. And I think it's like creating kids to like kind of snack in class, which like you don't really want because you're like, if you're having to take your mask off or anything. Kind of like sneak away to or whatever. But I think just like kind of eliminating some of the five breaks in like you, even it's like the outside mass breaks. So I'm pretty sure some like the middle school does too, or kind of working away. I think out of the most thing that I've gathered from student feedback, like that's the one thing they're really looking for is just like a nine, we used to have nine minute breaks. So a nine, 10 minute break. Somewhere in the kind of middle morning, I think would be nice. Spring sports have started, which I know a lot of people are really happy about just being able to get outside. Obviously with the cases that kind of sprung up at the, over the previous weekend, it was a kind of nice to see like it was really on the students to be responsible since it wasn't necessarily like the nurse based contact tracing. It was really just like students being aware of if they were in a close contact either traveling or over the break. So I think just to be able to contain it, it was handled pretty well. And I'm sure now it's keep going. We have to just keep up being safe so we can continue to have those activities coming up in the next few weeks. And then now I know that the National Honor Society students, they're kind of wrapping up their independent service projects. So we'll get to see those kind of ways that they help benefit the community, those while we put in slideshows that will come out. And then the last thing I kind of wanted to talk about is I shared with Mr. Sullivan and Mr. McClellan earlier was just about the health curriculum and I just wanted to take the opportunity because this is something that like I kind of have passion and thought for is that and I'm senior, so I took health third quarter. It was just some of the things I noticed was that the curriculum and the resources that we were provided about kind of like that mirrored the mental health week, like I definitely think could be improved. Just it seemed like really outdated in some of the kind of things presented in worksheets. We definitely like kind of went out on our own as we did our own like little research, like presentations. But I definitely think going forward, and I know that kids taking health now, like they're already kind of at a disadvantage because they're like the quarter is so short before they leave. So I think especially like as we're kind of going off to college and like in a response to the pandemic, like we've definitely seen the mental health of like stress and anxiety and depression in teens like really go up after kind of adjusting to the whole pandemic in isolation. So I definitely think, I know like the curriculum was already being audited, but just an additional perspective about how there's definitely ways to improve that unit, especially because there's so much, many more resources now. And I think we need to as a school to help benefit our students more, be able to find those and find the way that they'll get across better more. So that's all. And I thank you for your opportunity. I think this is, might be my last meeting. I might like try to sneak in one more from Jake and Jenna before I graduate, but thank you all.
Thank you, Caroline, as always. Chairman McClellan, any questions from the committee?
I don't know, Dr. Sullivan. Let me ask, Mrs. Coleri?
Thank you, Caroline, so much. Thank you for all of your work that you, you've been so helpful to us in your time here. So I'm super grateful and I wish you the best and all that your future has in store for you. I was wondering though, so I, this health situation I'm very interested in. And I don't know really much about the curriculum that is used and so you're referencing mental health resources and information?
Yeah. So we did a, it was interesting because the unit that we had was more like centered around depression. And we kind of went through a lot of like seasonal depression, bipolar depression. And I just like, I can tell when like works, we had the same worksheet sophomore year given to us as seniors and I, I like, I just remember and I've can tell. So I think my point on, point of view from that, it was just how there's more about mental health and relationships, just more anxiety, which I think you see way more in students and like young people than you would necessarily like bipolar, just like obviously very important to talk about, just to have an understanding. But just like surrounding that and it was like, we were just kind of in a time crunch anyways. So I don't know if it would have kind of been different, but that's definitely something I noticed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Coleri. Mr. Kearney?
Yes. Hi Caroline. And I want to thank you for your service to our community. It's been great. And to get us, you know, the eyes of a student. You presented well, you know, especially, you know, the concern about the breaks. You know, I have children in the middle school and the high school and that is something that we got to look into and, and just to bring that perspective is, is awesome. And I just want to thank you that and wish you all luck.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Mar, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'll just echo my colleagues. Thank you very much, Caroline. It's been great getting to know you over the last two years. And good luck next year. Go Eagles.
Yes, thank you, Caroline. Thanks for highlighting the issues with the health curriculum that you addressed with Dr. Sullivan and I in the smaller meeting. I think it's important that people hear that. And I, I know that the district is, it will respond to those, to those needs. It's obviously, you know, a fundamental part of what we do is to promote positive mental, social, emotional wellbeing here in the district. So thank you for highlighting that for us. And congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. Boston College is an excellent school. And they're going to love you up there in Chestnut Hill. You're going to make a great Eagle. They're lucky to have you. Thank you for all of your very candid and an important insight. It was an important role that you played here. Like I always say, we're here because of you guys. And I think having these student representatives has always been a major improvement to the school committee since in my short tenure. So thanks so much for lending your time and your insights, Caroline. We wish you the best of luck. We don't see you again.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
Okay, a couple of just other activities that the seniors will be partaking in. In May, we have a prom happening on May 21st, which will happen here at Alumni. So excited to follow all of the social distancing, all the rules appropriately, but to provide as much of a prom as we can. I know a lot of students are excited about that. And then we have a senior celebration on May 27th. And then finally, our graduation, which is May 28th at 5:00 PM here at Alumni Field. And I know Principal Scott's team always do such a great job setting all these things up. And certainly they'll be communicating more information to the community as we get closer. So very, very excited about that. Oh, we're joined by Athletic Director Rattandi. Quite ready for Athletic Director Rattandi, but he's coming up. So thank you, Caroline, again for everything you've done to provide voice for the students and good luck at Boston College. But I know I'll see you before that. So Chairman McClellan, shall I move on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, super. All right. Well, as, as you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we are graced by the presence of Principal Farrell and Principal Sullivan, who have done such a fantastic job at every stage of this sort of reentry to full in person, which they've been in now for quite some time. As we mentioned, it was March, was it 8th? March 1st, that's March, March 1st, March 1st. Let's see, the time flies, it takes it right out of my memory. But we promised that we would update at about the six week period, which I think is always a good measure for how things are going. It's a, it's a good mark always at the beginning of the school year. If you remember, when we started this year, we really looked at how our hybrid plan was going at, at the six week period. And we're going to do the same with the middle and the high school, probably on the 19th or whenever the next, yeah, May 19th. Not next meeting, but the meeting after, we'll invite Principal Scott and Principal Mills here to talk a little bit about it. So I guess let's tell Principal Farrell, maybe just tell us a little bit about how things went. Some of the challenges, you know, you sort of overcame as a, as a team and then some of the things you might be looking forward to as we continue on in the year. And then I'll let Principal Sullivan do the same. And then if anyone from the community or certainly the, the school committee members have questions, that's what we're here for. So Principal Farrell, thanks again and take it away.
All right. Good evening and thank you for having us here this evening. Six weeks went by really fast. It seems like it was just March 1st last week. The highlights of the returning back to school are obviously the students, the smiles on their faces, the excitement to be here. The, I believe, PSO had coined the term March is the new September and it did feel like the new September. It definitely was nice having all the students back in the building. The staff did a fantastic job welcoming the students every day, just when they come in, getting ready. I know, I do want to take a moment to thank Mr. Vinton and our Adjustment Councils at the elementary level because the students were very happy about coming back. And as our senior who just left said, it is, there's a lot of anxiety around all this newness. So I think the staff did a great job just trying to keep everybody new was okay, but when something is new, it also causes anxiety for parents and for children. So the dismissal and the arrival were probably two of our biggest hurdles to cross back in March. And I think we've we've done a nice job making sure that everybody arrives with a smile on their face at a good time and departure is going really well. Thank you to the Deer Hill staff also, because I know they're working really hard to get the cars moving so that when they come up to us, we're not backing everything up. I did want to mention also that the classroom specialist, art music, PE, library and phys ed have done a fantastic job, both when we were remote, always checking in with the students, but now that the students are back in person, just keeping that excitement going. And I think they had a really tough job because they didn't, there might've been a class that they are grade level that they didn't see. In a normal year, you'd see all your first graders, all your second graders and all your kindergarten staff, children. This year, they had to piece together what they did when they had them virtually and then coming back. And I think they did a great job. The students are excited about going to the specialists and it just seems like it's a normal year. The PSO and the CEF, I wanted to thank them. They did a fantastic job as far as welcoming, welcoming the staff back. Everybody was anxious in the beginning, again, with something new, how are we going to do this? And the comfort level that the staff felt with knowing that the CEF and the PSO were welcoming them, doing small treats, giving small treats and doing small things for them was fantastic. As far as trying to keep things as much as as the excitement level as we can, the PSO has run a couple of different events. And with using the guidelines, the social distancing guidelines, they've been very helpful as far as setting things up and then sending it into school. An example of that would be this week is STEM Week. It starts tomorrow. And we have the Science Museum and a couple of other events that are going to be going on virtually. And the PSO set up a lot of these activities, sent them in, and then the office staff here has disseminated the activities or what, what is needed for the activity. The other activity that we are talking about is the book fair, which will be virtual. Of course, everybody gets all excited about either fail day or snap or sneaker day. So we're looking at how we can do that and be socially responsible for distancing. I don't know if people have questions or comments, but it has been a, it's been a nice transition. It was nice to come back after April vacation and have that behind us. So that was exciting.
Thank you, Principal Farrell. Dr. Sullivan, you mind if we take it one building at a time and I ask the school committee if they have any questions? As to Principal Farrell, Mrs. Coleri, any questions for Principal Farrell?
No, thank you for your update.
No, thank you for your update.
Mr. Kearney?
No, thank you as well.
Mrs. Marr?
Well, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Farrell, I'll just personally thank you as a parent for everything that your building has done for my daughter. It's been amazing. The transformation I've seen in her since she's been back. Has been remarkable and I know personally from being there from time to time, how much effort and passion you put into it. So thank you so much. All those tireless hours that you put into ensuring that Joseph Osgood School runs like a finely tuned instrument. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Farrell, and I'll invite Principal Sullivan to share similar thoughts.
And so similar to Principal Farrell. You know, I think that that return was filled with excitement, but that is, you know, it's another change. We had another first day of school and I think. What I remember that first week is how happy tired everyone was. They were happy to be back, but they were exhausted. And that's okay. That that's just how first days of school go and how they go. Even when those first days occur on March first. So that that's how we kind of kicked off. We did also, you know, kind of need to iron out some of those logistical pieces with pick up and drop off and. You know, lunches and things like that, but it it happened and and really that's a testimony to. The partnership between the staff and the families and everyone just really. I've never seen such a level of patience with our our pick up and drop off routine. Parents were smiling and waving and. And 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 have maintained that and that's really just, you know, I I really appreciate that recognition that that we're all doing the best we can and. And that we appreciate everyone just kind of going going slow to go fast and just kind of rolling with the little bumps that we encounter. But it's it's been a very smooth start, I would think. To the full return. I'm really happy with how it's gone. I think for Deer Hill, what I like to think about is just. The highlights for us are just the things that feel so normal, the things we used to take for granted that now. We appreciate that much more. We have Farmer John back from Holly Hill. He's. Met with fourth grade and fifth grade and will soon be meeting with third grade. He's out planting in our courtyard with the students and talking about composting and area and perimeter and. And all these great academic lessons that he, you know, masterfully integrates into gardening. So that's been great. A new program we have this year at Deer Hill that have every intention of maintaining is our yoga program. And it couldn't be better timed with just, you know, the the stressors of this year. And so. We were able to expand that and so every class should have two yoga sessions. And we look forward to continuing that. It's really a highlight for the week for students and and we're really appreciative of. The C E F, and that was a grant, and Maria Gustafson, who is our yoga teacher and a parent. And so that's been exceptional as well. As Principal Farrell shared as well, we have had great support from the P S O in in continuing to keep the joy with. Enrichment assemblies. Today, we had tech exploration. And that's one we have every year and it's incredibly energetic and hands-on and it's very, you know, there's there's pulleys and all kinds of things happening in structures and. Then there's breakout sessions for the fifth grade and I I have to say, I was a little worried how that was going to transfer virtually. And it was a huge success. I think that the energy that the presenters bring. Really drove that and it was it was phenomenal. And I think that's been another. One of the things that have happened this year is there have been other opportunities that might not have presented themselves to us. And and teachers are really seeking them out. Teachers have initiated and brought authors. We had an author's visit earlier this week where. You know, one teacher set it up and then invited the fourth and fifth grade, you know, where it was appropriate for her to join in and and. That was really powerful. We've had writing lessons from, you know, high school teachers and authors that have come and written with students. Come virtually and written with students. And so those kinds of things have been really nice as we are fully returned and yet still have these virtual components to our day. We had a Penguin field trip from a Penguin habitat in Arizona that was phenomenal. You know, that would never have been possible before. So that's been really exciting as well. You know, as we as we settle in, our our curriculum is humming along as well. Bridges has been an amazing math program and really, I think, an incredible anchor this year to our curriculum and I. Was in a meeting with Dr. Scollins and Principal Farrell and our our math specialists earlier this week where. They just feel really good about about that. And I think a lot of our fears as we head toward the end of the year that students wouldn't. Be prepared for the next grade level are are diminishing as we realize that we. Hit a slam dunk with the program we selected and the rigor has carried us through. And so that's very exciting and. You know, I think our E L A program is humming along just as well. And so as we. Head into M C A S season, which will be coming up in May for a couple of weeks, I think we're we're positioned well to have a good wrap up to our curricular year. For sure. And then looking forward to that end of the year, we have some old traditions coming back. The fifth grade will. Is planning on doing their egg drop this year where they launch first from the roof and then the successful. Eggs get launched from the fire truck ladder. So, you know, again, we're looking at modifications. We're hoping to partner with. Cohasset one four three or the high school video program to stream it so that. Families can watch and other classes can watch and things like that, since, you know, crowding outside won't be possible. We've also got some ideas for how we can host our field day. The P S O is working hard on a modified fifth grade send off. We've been working closely with Principal Mills at the middle school to transition those fifth graders and ease those anxieties and have a move up day there. So and then also a second grade orientation, you know, typically I host a a Zoom for or a meeting for those families. Last year I did a Zoom and and plan to do that as well. And so, you know, coming and going, we are we're trying to make sure everyone feels good about how the year wraps up and and start looking forward. To the fall. So that's where we are at Deer Hill. It's 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 busy. I it's just busy for everyone right now, but again, in that very happy tired kind of way.
Well said. Thank you, Principal Sullivan. Hello, Chairman McClellan, if you have any questions for Principal Sullivan?
Thank you, Principal Sullivan. Mrs. Cleary, any questions or comments?
No, thank you, Principal Sullivan.
Mr. Kearney?
Yes, I just have a comment. Awesome job from both principals. I think this is is exciting to see things come back. And it's nice to share that. I also hope that next year you guys have that basketball game that. I was able to play in twice and.
You can be an alumni parent.
Get there anymore, but yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Kearney. Mrs. Marr?
Oh, no, thank you, um, Mrs. Principal Sullivan. It's, um. I'd like to hear your comments about the Bridges Math Program because, you know, that was a very well thought out pilot and you're. Both buildings did a lot of due diligence on it and really vetted the program. And it's very encouraging to hear that you. Some of the learning gaps that we were fearful of could could be tightened up a little bit because of the strength of the program. So. Well done to Dr. Scollins and the math team on putting it in so successfully.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marr. Thank you, Principal Sullivan, and another enormous asset to the Cohasset Public Schools and. I am looking forward as a parent to becoming a Deer Hill parent in the near future. And benefiting from the wonderful building that you run. So thank you so much for being here, Dr. Sullivan.
Yeah, I know, I just want to echo that what the what both Principal Farrell and Principal Sullivan said in terms of. Their care for the students and it's really when I'm complimenting them, I'm complimenting their staffs too. I mean, obviously they're making it happen. But the the staff is very in tune to the social emotional needs of the students coming back. They've worked very closely with Dr. Scollins, Mrs. Sawanka, other folks to. Measure any potential unfinished learning. And I think we're finding that we're in maybe a better place than we thought we would be, but we're attending to those needs as we see them. And we're also, Principal Sullivan mentioned, the virtual components that we're able to blend in. I think both schools are seeing that, you know, we learned something from from the pandemic about what we can. Do to enrich the learning that's happening in person and and how we can enrich our meetings even and meet in a better way. And I'd love to see that happening. And then, you know, with both groups, we're looking at. Kind of getting back to some normalcy in our traditions and trying to do those traditions. Whether it's the sneaker snapper day or the 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 field day or whatever it is. But we're very careful to make sure that we're safe. Safety comes first and. We're having all 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 conversations geared around making sure that we can provide as normal a situation as possible for the kids. In terms of those traditions, but still maintaining safety, just as we're doing at the middle and the high school. And I love to hear those transitions and the talk about those transitions happening at both levels, both between Ausgood and Deer Hill and. Deer Hill to the middle school and then, of course, middle school and high school. That's near and dear to me because those transitional times are so important in a district. So I just want to express one more thank you to them and job well done and have a great night unless there's any more questions.
Thank you very much, Principal Farrell and Sullivan. And I'd just like to note for the record that at six forty two, Mrs. St. Orange has joined us.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you both.
Thank you both. Have a wonderful night. Thanks again. Okay, shall I move on, Chairman McClellan?
Please do.
All right, so next on the agenda is a relook at the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two district calendar. If you remember, I presented it. And received approval for a calendar for next year. When I almost immediately when I got back, I realized that that. Juneteenth, which is June nineteenth, and of course, this is the first year, I believe it's a state holiday, state recognized holiday. This year falls on a Saturday and it's celebrated on the Saturday. Next year, however, in our calendar, it falls on a Sunday. What I didn't realize, and I'll take complete blame for this, is that when when state holidays fall on a Sunday in Massachusetts. They're observed on the Monday. I had forgotten that. And so we need to, by by state. Law, we're we, you know, not, we have to move it to that Monday. So it's really not a a voteable issue. I just, I wanted to bring up. That to this committee as point number one. Now, the second point I I like to bring up for your consideration is that we have, we had planned on starting on. Tuesday, September seventh for all students. That's Rosh Hashanah. And I I'm looking at it from the operational aspect of having many, it's the first day of school and having many students. Who might not be able to attend school because of their observation of that that holiday and staff as well. So from an operational standpoint, I I wanted to put out the possibility to you of considering the start date. Being Wednesday, September eighth, and everything else would essentially stay the same. We'd have the the same all teachers opening days. And we would, we would be, the calendar I presented to you with just Juneteenth in there. If you did indeed decide to start school on the eighth, then the last day of school would be on June twenty third. Which is actually the same date as this year and it will be a half day on the twenty third. So I'd like to the really basically inform you about Juneteenth and then bring the Rosh Hashanah. Starting on the eighth of September, point to your consideration. So I leave it with you, Chairman McClellan, to consider it with the group.
Okay, if you have any comments, we'll go around and if not, we can take a motion, if anyone makes one, to approve the the suggested amendments. Mrs. Cleary, do you have any comments?
No, just apologies for the oversight. I wish I caught that also.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney.
I'm just glad that I'm and grateful that we 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 caught that because I actually had a parent. Email me about that and I'm gonna be excited to email him back that we addressed it. So. It's nice to be proactive and make going forward. I think that's great.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Marr?
No comments.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Nothing to add.
Okay, thank you very much. There was one comment. From the community, Ally Trager, there was not an address noted for the record, but. Mentioned the first day of school falls on Rosh Hashanah. Was this an oversight and will it be corrected? So I think that you have directly addressed that already, Dr. Sullivan. And with that, I'd seek a motion to approve the calendar as. Excuse me, approve the calendar amendments as suggested by Dr. Sullivan tonight. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Kearney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. St. Orange, all in favor, Mrs. Cleary? Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Marr?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan, Dr. Sullivan, that motion unanimously carries. And we would ask you to effectuate those suggested changes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Absolutely will and I will send a revised calendar to the community tomorrow and we'll update it on the website. Thank you again and I apologize for the. For the oversight. So moving on, we we have our athletic update and I know that Steve Rotandi, I did see him arrive earlier in the program, so he is here. Athletic Director Rotandi, are you able to come on camera? There you are. I know he had presented you with some documents with some figures from the fall and the winter seasons and. Although Athletic Director Rotandi, you wanted to just talk a little bit about the the accomplishments of some of your teams. Just a compliment to Athletic Director Rotandi and his staff, the coaches. They they've had a tough, a tough road to kind of hoe here with the. With the protocols they've had to put in place to keep everybody safe. And to still be able to successfully provide our our students with seasons and they've done a a great job of that and. Thank you to the athletes too, who have had to be very careful. With the responsibility of ensuring that they do everything they need to to make sure they have a season. So. Thank you for that and I'll leave it to you to update a little bit and then if there are any questions on the documents, I know we'll take them. If not. Then, you know, we can move on to to the next item. So Athletic Director Rotandi.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Thank you for having me. It's nice to see everybody. Yeah, I think prior to going to the report, just to kind of cover the athletic season, I guess I'll start on the higher note. So right now our spring seasons are. In full swing and everybody's out on the field. It's just been so nice to see the kids outdoors. We really use a lot of different facilities throughout the spring. So as people make their way throughout town, it's. You're almost guaranteed to find some of our athletes out there putting in the time and the work and and they're really enjoying themselves. So. That's, it's just been great to have them all outside and get to see the spring sports underway. The the spring season is going to be the first time we're going to have a state state tournament. M I A A state playoffs since the first time since the winter of twenty nineteen season. So about a year and a half. This hasn't been there. So very excited for the kids. It's a it's an opt-in tournament. So it was really designed that if schools. Were to take any kind of pauses, they wouldn't be penalized for not having. The needed wins typically to qualify for the tournament. So every sport, every school can opt into this this tournament. That's going to start this June. So I'm excited for the kids that they're going to get that opportunity. Between the ones that had missed out on it and some of our underclassmen who have never experienced it. I'm excited that for them that they're going to get an opportunity to do that. So it should be a really fun spring for everybody. The. The coaches and kids are doing a great job at following all the protocols and they're just excited to play. So. That's that's really a a great part about the spring and and where we're at right now. And, you know, usually when I come on here too, I I really. Appreciate the opportunity to go through season by season and, you know, highlight our our all-stars and. The teams that won and their, you know, successes that they had. But I I was really thinking about it tonight and it's it's more so. Than those pieces. I I just got to give so much credit to the kids and the coaches that. That this year and like Dr. Sullivan said, it's just been such like a the the unknown. It's been such a unique year. I keep calling it a. Unique year of shuffling of sports and and, you know, our kids have just been so dedicated and and have worked so hard. At any opportunity that they've been given. And and I really think, you know, we talk about a lot our culture and taking pride in your school and taking pride in your town. And I really think our kids show that. It's it's not difficult. It's really difficult to, you know, practice for three days and then told you can't practice for two weeks and then come back and. I think for some people that can be unmotivating and our kids, I haven't seen it anywhere. They come back so. Dedicated and ready to get back to work and I and I think that just speaks to them, who they are, our our school in itself and and that's been really. Rewarding for me to see that through them, that they they haven't turned negative on it at all. They've tried to turn every negative into a positive and and that can be tough to do. So I give them all the all the credit for that. That's been really fun for me to see. One unique thing I want in that is we have some four sport athletes this year with an added fall two season. Where for the first time ever, kids have been able to play four sports and in one school year. So we've had some athletes take advantage of that and. They've had fun in doing that and getting to play sports that they they would never get to play before because of the overlap in in seasons. And and with that, in our our fall two season. Where we had football and cheer, we had the opportunity to add an interview intermural volleyball program. Which some some kids really took advantage of and had fun with and our system. which some some kids really took advantage of and had fun with. And our assistant principal, Tara Noyes, coached throughout that and and had a lot of fun with it too. And we were also able to take advantage of getting some kids in a strength and conditioning program that we're hoping to build up throughout the summer and really offer that to the the community and and give kids something to look forward to in in the summer to to stay in shape. So those are two programs that we added that that I feel were successful and and went really well. I guess I would leave it there. Update-wise, I I did submit our our fall and winter financial reports. And I guess quickly to to speak to those and then answer any questions that anyone may have, the the some things I wanted to mention are, you know, we decided this year we we wouldn't collect fees at the gates, you know, admissions to games, which I think has been very much appreciated and and feedback that I've got. Some of our our variances that were in the reports were due to our shortened seasons or teams not having as many games. And and I think the reports themselves did look a little different because of the shuffling of the sports. Some have been, you know, football played in the fall too, wrestling is
Seems like some connectivity issues. Is everyone else there or is it just me? Seems like Dr. Sullivan.
Going so well.
Eight years old frozen in time here.
In the building.
Usually sort of rectifies itself after a few seconds, but I wonder, I know that Dr. Sullivan's at the central office, maybe, I don't know if A.D. Retunni is also at the at the on the campus. Maybe it's an issue.
Yeah, Dr. Sullivan just said something happened. So he just texted me.
Okay.
Yes, you are.
There they go.
They're got, yeah.
Okay, well, let's just pause here for a second and give them an an opportunity to get back.
Hi, Dr. Sullivan. There you are.
Guys, welcome back.
Welcome back.
Yeah, we're, I assume you're in the building with me here, Steve. Oh, he's muted.
Muted.
I hope we weren't frozen there, Dr. Sullivan, the whole time that I, we just worked through that, were we?
Well, yeah, we, it's good we've been practicing being yeah, I think we were. I I I don't know where we left off, but looks like we're back to normal functioning order. I guess you must be in the building here with me because that's, yeah.
I am, yeah.
You talked about four sports, that students were able to play four sports, Steve, and then you froze.
Oh, no, I went on for like an hour after that. No. I said, I I'm working on learning when to take a breath. So maybe getting kicked off was the, you know, someone telling me that that was the time. So did I, did I, Scott, did you hear regards to the financial report?
You were starting to go into that.
Okay, um, so with the the financial report, one thing coming off the athletics, I was saying that our participation numbers have still been consistent, which was was nice to see. There was some shuffling of the sports and the seasons, but overall, some some sports went a little bit higher, where some went lower. But the overall participation number was was great to see. I said throughout the financial, there there was some variances due to shortened seasons and and just playing less games and also not collecting gate receipts at games, which I felt was well-received by by our families coming up to support. And then I wanted to turn it over for questions, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Retunni. Mrs. Kaleri, any questions for A.D. Retunni?
I have to ask. There, I noticed that the boys soccer coaches make more than the girls soccer coaches. So I'm assuming there's a simple explanation for that. Can you please share it with me?
I I would have to get back to you on that. I I was not aware of that.
Okay. And maybe there's one more coach on the boys, or I don't know. I don't know.
Oh, I apologize. I I apologize. You meant the 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 total, like you you salaries.
All I see is the line item, so.
Yeah, so that, so our our coaches are paid right through the teaching contract. So that's why I was thinking our
Uh-oh.
Take screenshots so you can show them like what they look like. I mean, it's that to them, yeah. And I'm sure he knows that it, something must happen. You're back.
They're back, okay.
That worked. Did you have to sign off and sign back in? Is that what you're doing? Or does it just snap out of it?
No, it just snapped out of it. If it doesn't again, I'm gonna, I made you a co-host there, Dr. Scollins.
Thank you. I was just gonna ask you to do that.
If it does it again, I'm gonna leave and come back on my phone, but we'll give it one more try. Poor Steve.
Let's, let's, let's keep on going so that we don't have this happen again. So so Steve, Mr. Retunni, you were talking about the the line items on the salaries when you got cut off. You're muted, you're muted.
Sorry, here we go. It is the the coaches through the athletic budget and the teacher's contract get paid the same amount on the boys and girls side. It's that each program has the ability if and and through the the boosters, they can bring on an added assistant coach. And we've had certain years when the boys have taken advantage of that and and the or the girls have taken advantage of that. So that's, that was the difference there is that the boys had had an added coach and and the girls didn't seem necessary for this season, but that could change next year and they both have the ability to pursue it season to the season.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaleri. Mr. Kearney?
Yes, Steve, thank you. My children have been in sports the whole time and it's because of you and your staff and it's it's so greatly appreciated. I think my children or my girls are one of the four, they do the four sports and they did the volleyball and they loved it. That was a huge success. And they're looking forward to softball and it's good to see, and I'm glad Ashley brought up girls doing more sports. I mean, you're starting to see that, Steve, aren't you?
Yeah, absolutely. With football being so big, it it pushes the participation a little bit on the other end. But yeah, we have about the same percentage, boys versus girls that that participate in sports.
Yeah, that's great. Fantastic. And and also too, is my biggest concern too is the kids that don't make the team and the same that and I know people will say, you know, they they, no one gets cut, but that's not true. I mean, sometimes they'll just cut themselves because they don't feel confident enough that they can make the team. So adding that strength and training component, you know, is a huge, that's that's huge because it gives the gives the kid the opportunity to come back and and get better. And I appreciate that. We appreciate that. And I just, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kearney. Miss, where are we? Mrs. Mar, do you have any comments, questions?
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Appreciate the report. I have just a quick question on girls hockey. You had, you had noted when you sent out the report about boys hockey and why the ice rental was the differential on that because Hall didn't participate. And it didn't, it looked in the girls hockey that our rental money was almost the same as last year. Did we still co-op with Hanover this year?
Yes.
Okay, and did we have this about the same number of? Sorry, was it the winter season about maybe half of what it typically is?
In terms of length?
The length of the and the number of contests and the number of practices.
The 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 length was was pretty close to about the the same. We started two weeks later. And again, for a lot of the, especially the ice hockey bills remaining the same and is usually if if we have a snow day or a cancellation, they'll, you know, allow us to call in ahead and they they won't charge us that that fee. But this year, in understanding them running a business well, there were times that we weren't on the ice or maybe we were quarantined and we weren't using it, but they they didn't have the luxury of being able to just forgive those chunks of times because they, you know, they were trying to keep their doors open as well. But if if anything, we tried to this year, more so than last year, was get them on the ice more because the a number of games was limited. So we just tried to take advantage on days where they would have typically an off day. It would be fine. We tried to get them on the ice because the season wasn't going to be able to provide as many games as it had in the past.
Okay, and one more question, you know, the MIAA this this year that we're in allowed out of season practices, you know, and and typically, I think of the South Shore League and Cohasset allowed the the next season sport to to start practicing in the in the prior season. Has there been any conversation, are you aware of for next year, how that's going to be handled or is it going to revert back? What is it, rule forty or something?
Yeah, so they've already made the decision to revert back. I think our coaches did a very nice job with it and and took advantage of an opportunity and our kids enjoyed it. The feedback that I've gotten statewide is that some, i- it it wasn't a success in all places. So yes, it's, the decision's already been made that it will revert back to the old rule effective July one.
Okay, all right. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar. Mrs. St. Orange, do you have any questions or comments for A.D. Retunni?
Just, just thanks for for getting it all coordinated. I know there's a lot of moving parts and and continue to be. So thank you for all of your hard work and I I think that your acknowledgement of the kids and their resilience is is spot on. It's just great to see everyone kind of pushing forward and recognizing the the silver linings of of everything we're going through. So thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Retunni, as always, for your time and your dedication. I I do see a few comments coming in from one of the members that are watching at home. That is Dan Leahy of two fifteen Forest Avenue. He asks, is there any plans to replace the thirty-five percent of the bulbs at Alumni Field that are burned out? And when, where and who controls discussion on upgrading said lights? So I don't know if that's directed to Mr. Retunni or Dr. Sullivan or Ms. Owen.
Well, I I think it would be directed inevitably to Ms. Ms. Owen, but I I know it's a town item as well. So, you know, perhaps that's something we can, we can address in in capital for sure, but maybe it would be something that Ms. Owen, you could check in with some of our, maybe Christine here or some people from the town to to figure out who indeed would be responsible for that.
Absolutely. I can, I can check in with Nick in facilities too and see.
So just
I didn't realize there were that many out, to be honest.
I didn't know either.
Just so that we can maybe give Mr. Leahy some direction though, Mr. Leahy, Ms. Owen's email address so that you can get in touch with her and be in contact with her about the issue as she follows up on it for you, which she of course will. Her email address is S. Owen, O W E N, as in Norman, S. Owen, at Cohasset K twelve dot org. So please feel free to email her so you're in touch. Okay, and thank you for your participation. That's it. I don't have any questions. So unless there are anything further, thank you so much, Mr. Retunni, our athletic director.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Have a great night. Good luck with lacrosse. As you know, Steve's also our head lacrosse coach, so exciting for the season. Good luck.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. So Chair McClellan, if I push on here, our next item is the permission to dispose of some library materials. And I know that our library media specialist, Ms. Rudy, has shared with you her criteria for removing books from the library. And we would like to ask permission to dispose of approximately six hundred and eleven books that met the criteria for getting rid of the books that are from the seventies, eighties and nineties. A lot of them are young adult fiction. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to you, Chair McClellan, for consideration of that.
Sure, we'll go around the table quickly and if there are no comments, then we can maybe trust the librarian's evaluation here and make a motion. So Mrs. Kaleri, any comments or questions?
No.
Mr. Kearney?
No.
Mrs. Mar?
No.
Mrs. St. Orange?
I trust the librarian.
Okay, as do I. So is there a motion to approve the disposal of the items presented in the list, Agenda Item C three?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Kaleri. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, was that Mrs. Mar?
Yes.
Seconded by Mrs. Mar. All in favor, Mrs. Kaleri?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan, Dr. Sullivan, that motion unanimously carries. So please dispose of those items.
Will do. Thank you very much. And moving on, next we have a quick review of some enrollment trends. And I know, just preface this with, we're really trying to establish a better system to track enrollment and where, you know, over the next couple of years, we'll be certainly modifying that and attending to it. But we do have some information for you and Dr. Scollins was nice enough to gather it for me. So thank you, Dr. Scollins. So with that comes the, you know, the honor of presenting the enrollment trend. So, Dr. Scollins. Do you want me to share?
No, if you give me rights, then I can.
You got it. You already have it. Oh, you know what?
No.
I now you do. When I kicked out, I lost.
Yes, to Dr. Sullivan's point, I want to thank people that really helped pull this together. We will have a system moving forward, but we went from one student learning man, student management system to another. So we need to do a little bit of digging and I, so I want to thank the front offices at all the schools, the principals, guidance at the high school, Tejal in IT, because it was definitely a group effort to pull these numbers together. But now that we have Aspen, we'll be able to set a process forward to be able to see, you know, to be able to track this. So you have the document in front of you, but we went back two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen to our current year. And I really just put it by grade and, you know, how many students went to which particular schools. And you'll notice some interesting trends over time. I would bet this has still a lot to do with COVID, but that year of two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we had sixteen students. And then in the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, we had some younger students who moved on and we had about seventeen. But this past year, we had many more students leave that we would have had in the past. And that number of students is thirty-six. Yeah, so we have thirty-six students leave for private school and a lot of them were because of the fact that they wanted to be on fully in person and that wasn't something that we were providing. So so we did have a lot of students move to those schools. Well, you know, those, there are those areas where you would normally see a jump sixth grade into seventh because some of the schools have a middle school component or you'll see that eighth grade to ninth grade. And that's normally where you would see students transition to a private school, but they went they they were all the way from kindergarten all the way up through through tenth grade. So, I mean, you can see a variety of different schools and schools that we didn't see. And it's nice that parents are telling, you know, that have shared with us where they're going. So I would anticipate some of these students returning. We'll see what happens. We'll be, you know, we'll see, see in the next few months as to what their decisions are. The other thing that I, do you have any questions though, before I move off of private school? Because I also had included some homeschool enrollment because there was a big, a big leap this year for that also.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Um, it just seems interesting to me that, and I know that this is sort of like a first go around gathering this information, but it seems interesting that the, from year to year, there's not like it, it would seem like someone who was in eighth grade at Notre Dame should be in ninth grade at Notre Dame the following year. Do you know what I mean? Did we just, there's just like a disconnect? there's just like a disconnect in data gathering, kind of?
Well, once they leave, they're, they're out of our system.
Okay, so this is each year's new enrollment?
Right.
Ah, okay, 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 all right.
Yeah, no, I don't carry this over. This is the year that they've left us.
Got it.
Well, this year, this is thirty seven, thirty-six students left to go to private school versus sixteen and seventeen the years before.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks for asking that question.
Any, any other questions regarding that? I was just going to do the whole thing and then have questions, but um, anyone else have questions? I can't see everyone, so just, just unmute yourself and speak up if you have a question. Okay, Dr. Scollins.
So then I'm going to stop sharing, so I'm going to pull up the other for homeschool. All right, here we go. Hopefully you can see that. Good. Thank you. So um, this again, we did over a three-year period and I just, on the column to the left is grade and then each column um, above gives you the year that we were looking at. So uh, in general, um, we run about ten to eleven students a year for homeschooling. And in, if you see at the last column for the two thousand twenty-one school year, we had a significant increase in students. Um, if it says returned, it means that they were in homeschooling, but they returned during the school year. And we had um, forty-five students. We ended up having a total of forty students and we had five that were returned. So um, so that's our, although, wait a minute, you must, you might have a different one. Yours says forty. Does yours say forty? Yeah. Yeah. Okay, apologize. So that's the corrected number. Um, Jennifer Seri has corrected it for me. She was the, she keeps track of this. And so when I was reading her data, I thought she said there were forty-five. Um, and five returned is actually forty with five returned. So um, that number is actually, I'm going to fix it right here so you can see it. Okay. Um, but that's a significant number and not, and I wasn't surprised by it. As you can imagine, I got lots of phone calls last year and over the summer and even throughout the school year as to what was the process for either going into an online program that we were offering or homeschooling um, because of, of how peo- parents were feeling um, for their students. So um, I would anticipate some of these students will be coming back also.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Scollins. I'll just go around quickly because, oh, now I can see everyone. Uh, Ms. Caleri, do you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Mr. Kearney?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Mar? Mrs. St. Ange?
I just have a little spell check comment. Um, Inly is I-N-L-Y and Buckingham Brown and Nichols is Brown with an E at the end. Other than that, great data collection. I appreciate you guys taking the time to do that.
Thank you. I'll fix that and realize that. Um, but yeah, you know, and we'll, we'll keep, continue to keep track of this information over time.
Um, thank you, um, Mrs. St. Ange. I just, I, I do want to note, like, it's completely understandable. Those twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one figures, I think, are completely understandable given situation. But obviously something we need to really monitor because if we see that numbers are still that large, after we're sort of back to more, you know, normal operations, you know, that's going to be really troubling. And that's the signal that people are, you know, not going to be, you know, that they're, they're not, they're wanting for something else. And it's not just the in-person issue that we're, you know, experiencing. Um, so let's just, you know, continue to keep an eye on that. And I know you do. Um, but it's, you know, it would be troubling if people continue to sort of exodus from our district. Um, so thank you for that, Dr. Scollins. Appreciate it. Dr. Sullivan, does that conclude the superintendent's report? No, it doesn't.
Not quite. Yes, just uh, one more thing. Um, we are a member of the South Shore Educational Collaborative, which is a um, school in Hingham that services many area districts that are all part of the collaborative. Um, every, we have Weymouth and Randolph and Braintree, Cohasset and Hingham and Situate and uh, Marshfield, um, Hull, uh, and Whitman Hansen. I don't think I left anybody else out. I, I may have, but it's those schools and I, I serve on the board of directors along with the other superintendents. South Shore Educational Collaborative consistently provides uh, services for several students from Cohasset each year uh, based on their individual educational programs and their, and their needs. Uh, it also provides us with uh, services such as evaluation services or um, professional development. Uh, it, it's a great resource for our community. But each year I do have to ask uh, for a vote to ensure that we will continue as a member of the South Shore Educational Collaborative. So um, unless there are questions, um, Chair McClellan, I'll turn it over to you to vote to continue our uh, participation in the South Shore Educational Collaborative for the upcoming school year.
Okay. Any questions? If not, I'll seek a motion. Mrs. Caleri, any questions? You can just shake your head if you don't have it. Mr. Kearney? Mrs. Mar?
Are we voting to remain in the collaborative or are we voting to appoint you as the board member, as our representative?
Oh, I think both, actually. Um, but I think uh, perhaps it's the, I think it's, I thi- I thought it was both. Um, but again, this is my first time through with this, so you might actually know better than I. I thought it was, I thought it was to um, to continue in the program, but I, I do believe at some point I have to be voted in as the person who stays in the chair. Uh, in the board of directors, I should say. So I guess we could do both.
You have a different understanding?
Sorry?
Mrs. Mar, do you have a different understanding as to?
No, I just recall from years past that, that the vote is to appoint the superintendent of schools as our representative on the board of the collaborative.
But I would believe, I would believe Mrs. Mar on this one. Uh, I, I, I thought it was, when I saw SSCC vote, I thought it was to stay in it, but uh, I guess by appointing me as the, the representative, we're certainly staying in it. So perhaps we should vote that in then. That makes sense. Chair McClellan.
Okay. Um, Mrs. St. Ange, do you have any questions or comments?
No, just that the agenda says SSCC board member, so it would presumably be that's what we're voting on.
Which was likely to carry over from the last entry from last year uh, for that meeting times template. So my guess is that Mrs. Mar probably remembers that accurately.
Yeah.
Oh, I would say yes.
Okay, so seeing no further uh, questions, uh, raise your hand if there are any, but I don't see any. Uh, is there a motion on the floor to uh, approve uh, or to, excuse me, um, vote that our superintendent is the board member for that organization?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Mar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded made by Mrs. Caleri, excuse me, seconded by Mrs. Caleri. All in favor, roll call, Mrs. Caleri?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney? Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
And Ms. Kearney, you cut out a little bit. I think, I'm presuming you said aye, but okay. Um, aye, Craig McClellan, Dr. Sullivan, that motion unanimously carries. So you are once again, the superintendent is once again approved as the board member for the SSCC.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll note that in my brain for next time that comes around. Thank you, uh, Ellen, for that. Um, wonderful. So I guess that does conclude the superintendent's report at this time. Chair McClellan.
Okay, thank you for your report, Dr. Sullivan. Moving on to our finance report, we turn to our uh, Director of Finance and Operation, Ms. Susan Owen. Ms. Owen?
Good evening, everyone. Um, Pat, do you want me to share? Do you want to share with me or do you want to share?
Yes, Leslie, I believe you, I made you host just because I'm having trouble with my internet stability. So if you can make Sue a co-host, she can then share. Please. How you doing? Just click. Did you get it?
Should be all set.
Thank you.
Here we go. So this is the um, FY twenty-one, March, well, July one, twenty twenty through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, just budget summary. And it, it's broken down by um, categories. Uh, you do notice that the special education um, is minus two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. I know we've talked about that. We're watching that. We, we had so, two settlements um, that came through this year. And we also had um, some additional students. I went back to past years and in FY eighteen, um, it was approximately minus two hundred thousand. And in nineteen, it was like minus a hundred and eight thousand. So it's, it's, you know, it's up a little bit higher, but it's, it's typical that that's the area that we see is high or in the negative, I should say. Um, let me go on to the next screen. I don't know what that is. Sorry, my computer's a little slow. This is the summary budget to actual expenditures um, for the same period of time, just in a different format. And you can see as we go through it, um, all the different categories where, you know, seventy-five percent through the school year and our school budget has been at sixty-five percent expended. So we're um, we're running a little bit ahead of the game. Um, I, I don't, I say that lightly because we also have the lump sum salaries coming through. So it's kind of a a skewed percentage when we have, you know, six final paychecks coming in June. The next item I believe is the all department expenditures. So this is the total um, the total budget with salaries, the LEA. So this is the school operating budget, the um, from July through March. It gives you all the different departments, their salaries. Um, usually starts off with the salaries or personnel and then gets, it rolls into um, supplies, materials, and it goes through the different departments and then the different schools. Um, same thing, the bottom line.
Mrs. Owen, your screen is not shared anymore. Not sure if you were aware of that.
Huh, no, I wasn't aware of that.
Hi.
So it's not letting me share.
If you stop share and then share, you stop share, then share again.
Oh, I can't even find.
Down the bottom.
Screen. One moment, eh? No, I don't even know where you are. Like, my to- whole screen is gone, Pat.
Okay. You can't, you, you don't see us?
I don't see any of you.
We still see you.
You, can you, do you have the um, the zoom icon at the bottom or at the top of your screen?
I, I have the zoom at, at the bottom.
If you click on that, we should show up.
No, no, I am clipping on that and it, let's see.
You have a mouse pad. You can do all four fingers up and then it should show all your windows and you can click on us.
Let's see, zoom. It's asking me to join another Zoom.
Um, i- is this something you had as part of the uh,
Okay, there you are. I have you back. Yes, it's in the packet. If you can, if you can bring it up.
Well, if you want to make me a co-host, uh, again, Dr. Scollins, I can find it.
All right, I'll look forward to it.
Just make me a co-host. I, I have it, I'm sure.
I did.
Okay, awesome.
Your co-host ducks up.
All right.
Um, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. So what is the document you're looking for?
Let's see. It should be um, number three. It says much, all department expenditures.
Is it right? It's in this here?
Yes, so it's, it's back up towards the top. So this is perfect because this is all in one place. So if you can keep going right there. So again, this is the summary to budget actual, which includes everything. Um, and again, you can see the bottom, the bottom numbers, what our total budget was, um, the twenty million nine six. Can't see it. Nine six oh eight five six, what we've expended, what we've encumbered, um, and what the remaining balance is. So the remaining balance is about seven point one million. Um, there's about, we need about six six million, so I'm trying to, a little over six million for our, our salaries for the remainder of the year. So there's about four, five hundred thousand dollars remaining and un, unencumbered, un, unspent funding, but that could be supplies, materials, that could be substitutes. Um, that could be a lot of things that we just don't, we don't know ahead of time. Then we get into the grants, the revolving in the grant. So um, shows here that the, all the grants that we have currently, um, what the operating, um, opening balances and receipts were, what we've expended. There are two new grants, small, um, the IDA sped program improvement, the two nine eight, and the early child, childhood targeted sped improvement um, for fourteen hundred and twenty-three dollars. Um, so those just came through the special ed department. But it will give, it gives you the total of what, what our grants are. The next slide should be a revolving. Um, again, the area that has been um, in the negative was the after-school, before and after-school care program. Um, that was basically just a ti- timing on deposits. If you follow um, the kindergarten, at the time of this report, there was ninety thousand dollars remaining. Um, I did a calculation. As of today, um, we had a beginning balance of forty-eight thousand. The revenue was two hundred and ninety-six thousand. Total revenue was three hundred and forty-four, forty-four thousand. Um, expenditures, we had a hundred and eighty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars in teacher salaries and another fifty-four nine nine eight in um, ESP salaries. And then for the remainder of the year, we, we still need another hundred and fifteen thousand um, to meet payroll. So just by looking at it rough, rough numbers, we're probably going to land about minus seven thousand dollars. Um, we've collected all our tuitions for FY twenty-one, so that was, that was successful. But we are going to end the year probably in deficit. This is just a historical of the grants. Um, I'm trying to give you a little history and something different each month, so it's not repetitive. So I went back to FY seventeen and you can see in FY seventeen, a total grant was one point two million. Eighteen, it was one point three. And then FY twenty-one obviously is up to over two million, but a lot of that is the, the COVID, the uh, SR grants, um, school reopening grants that have added um, quite a bit of money. This is um, remaining capital. So I know this, you know, we're still, um, there's still money in Chromebooks, but I know um, Ron is still working on that. The um, courtyard doors at Deer Hill, I have checked with um, the glass company. We were supposed to have delivery by May. Um, so they're just waiting for supplies, materials. And then the, the school um, banned air conditioner split that hasn't been initiated. Um, I spoke to facilities and they've just decided on a vendor. Um, so they're going to start moving forward and working on that room as well. This is the, the bus maintenance. Um, so this gives you an idea of the breakdown of what we, what we've spent and on what. Um, so you can s- see what was parts and labor, um, what was operating expense. We purchased a new software which will do all the routing for us, um, which is TransFinder. That's where you see the six, sixty-four hundred dollars. Um, we've been doing some trending on that. It's, it's going to be a real asset because it can um, pretty much do anything. It's, it's based on satellite. It, it imports and exports information from Aspen on a nightly basis. So if there's new students, it's automatically entered. Um, we can separate into cohorts if we need to. So Missy and the lads do not have to manually do our routes anymore. Um, once this is up and running. So this would be great. We also, it also has the feature that we can add um, a, a mobile app through GPS for parents, so they'll know- So they'll know exactly where their children are on the bus. We did not purchase that piece of the module this round because we want to get the basics up and running. And possibly next year, we'll add that GPS child finder on, for the bus route. So you'll know where your children are at all times. The next slide is just historical of what we spent over the years in preventative maintenance repairs, vandalism in the grand total. And I went back from two thousand sixteen all the way to two thousand twenty-one just to give it a historical of what, what we've been spending. And this is the actual detailed maintenance report from the beginning of the year through March of, of, you know, what, what's been done for preventative work or, or damages or. So I mean, it's, it's multiple pages. I think it just keeps going and going. Yeah, that's, that should be the end of it. So I mean, so that's it on the reporting. I don't know if there's any questions on the report. We're getting closer to the end of the year. So we're, we're really monitoring closely each payroll and subtracting it off the bottom line just to see where we're landing so far. It looks okay. I don't believe we're going to have an excess amount of money at the end of the year this year. But time will tell.
Okay, Chair McClellan, I don't know if any questions from the team?
Mrs. Caleri. Well, let's start with Mrs. St. Orange. Mrs. St. Orange, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Marr, do you have any?
Yeah, just a couple. The, so we're one point three percent ahead of where we were last year in terms of the expended and encumbered. But if you take off the differential on the encumbered, I mean, we're, we're, you know, we're similar to last year. I have to say that all of the schools are doing a really good job. Their, their percent expended and encumbered is, is very healthy. It's really in all of the district categories that we're over. We know we're over in our legal fees. We know we're over in special education and it'd be interesting, Mrs. Owens, you mentioned that we had a couple of settlements and a couple of students that we didn't anticipate. Now that's what the Special Education Reserve Fund is for. So if, if we get to a point where, you know, things are difficult, we should make sure that we get on a board of selectmen meeting because all it takes is a vote of the school committee and a vote of the board of selectmen. And unanticipated tuitions certainly qualifies for that. I did have a question. There's an encumbered, a seventeen thousand dollar encumbered expense actually in the business manager office that wasn't budgeted for. What was that?
Hold on, let me find it.
Mrs. Marr, what page you want?
I'm on page two. It's, it's page one of the detail report, but it was the second page in the attachment.
Which report is it again? Because I don't see it.
Yeah, it, it was the second page in the, in the handout, summary budget to actual expenditure report.
Summary budget to actual, all right.
Page one of that report.
Page one of that report, but it was page two in the pack.
Yep.
So I, I, I don't know exactly, but I can tell you what, what has, what, what we have done when we purchased all this furniture, the tents, the CIC in, in hopes of receiving our SR two money and our COVID money, the forty-four thousand, they've forgiven us twenty-two thousand. When there weren't accounts set up yet because we hadn't received the revenue, they put all the purchase orders to my, to my department's account as a holding place.
That makes sense, okay. All right, that makes sense, thank you. I don't really have any other specific comments. I would just, you know, like to have, have my colleagues next year, you know, they're going to watch this report. It's, it's important to see where, where the money is, you know, how the money is flowing month, month over month and where the anomalies are. And I think that one of the things you'll, you, you should watch out for is the legal expenses going into contract negotiations, even though you'll be negotiating next year for the, for the following three-year cycle, not only all of the bargaining units, but also all of the, most of the administrative contracts. And I, I just think, and you don't know what other issues are out there, that you might want to, might want to watch that. Because that's one of the overages. And if you haven't been saving, saving these for comparison, you, you probably should. And I have them all if anybody wants them when I'm done here. So that's, that's it, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Marr. Mrs. Caleri, do you have any questions regarding the, the March update?
I would just like to voice my interest in taking Alan up on her offer for, because I bet there's all kinds of writing and notes and everything on your copies, huh? Love, I'd love to get a look at those. So I'll connect if you want that. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Ms. Owen. So no further questions. Does that conclude your report?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on, we have the school committee section of the agenda. First on that is school facilities committee. I will just note that for those that are watching that haven't heard this before, there's, there's three entities that nominate members of the committee, school committee, town moderator and select board, each nominate three. Select board and town moderator are actively engaged in identifying and reviewing applications for the, for their nominees. And I've been in contact with the select board and it would appear that well, we, we anticipate having the, the committee fully constituted, or at least have a quorum by early summer and meeting. So that is good. It's a step in the right direction and, you know, we'll have to, once we're constituted, figure out what the first steps. But my guess is it'll, it'll, it'll involve hearing from the state school building authority and sort of getting a roadmap for this overall process. So we can all understand the, the process in general. But that, that is moving forward now. It'll, it'll a little bit more of a steady pace than it had before, now that all the kids are back in school. And the select board obviously has to just get through the budget through town meeting. And then, you know, obviously everyone can sort of focus on other things. But so it's understandable that they haven't been, you know, right on this. But there has, there has been progress and that, and that continues to be made. So that's my, my brief update there. Turn to any reports for subcommittees. We'll go around the table, Mrs. Caleri.
I do not have any updates on policy at this time, though I expect that we will have some to discuss at our next meeting. There, I went to the high school, school council meeting this week and I just, you know, there were a lot of cases in the high school after April vacation. I mean, they weren't cases in the high school, but our community in the high school had a lot of cases. So just my reminder that our senior activities and festivities and in-person learning are all very heavily reliant on our community doing what needs to be done as far as respecting protocols and guidelines around COVID. Principal Scott also shared that he anticipates that the high school faculty will be able to meet about the consultants' work around the climate and culture survey soon. And so I just wanted to say that I'm really grateful that we seem as a leadership team to be keeping our focus on that. And so I wanted to also thank Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins for that. And I look forward to whatever information we get whenever we get it. And then the other thing I wanted to, to raise is just that I noticed that there's legislation co-sponsored by Patrick Kearney of Situate for tuition-free kindergarten, universal tuition-free kindergarten, and that's in committee. And Senator O'Connor is on that committee. And I plan to follow up with Senator O'Connor. I didn't have an opportunity to do it before this meeting, but I'm interested to know the details of that bill and what the status is. I'll report back.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Caleri. Mr. Kearney?
Yes, we've been working on the Cohasset School Appreciation Committee. I'm going to be sharing this with you guys in the next couple of days. Like to consider that we spoke about it to, you know, just appreciate the people that do a lot for the community. This is a way to maybe create a wall of fame, take a picture or presentation, add a recipient to the wall in the community room. Just ways to do, prepare a short video, celebrates the accomplishment, highlights their commitment to the school and the community. You know, recommendations of a nomination form. And now I finally got this thing pretty much figured out. So I'll be sending it around to you guys. And I, I think it's really important that we, you know, recognize the people in the community for all they do. And, you know, it's, it's very motivating, it's very humbling, and, and, and I know they will appreciate that. So I'm looking forward to bringing this to our attention. I'm also looking forward to the wellness committee. I'm very excited to serve on that and we're making some really good headways. We're building the foundation and once we get that going, I think there's going to be a lot of good positive changes that are going to come out of that. Also to, you know, to talk about the school facilities committee, looking forward to that as well. So a lot of, a lot of good things happening in Cohasset.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney, for your continued positivity. Mrs. Marr.
I don't have any subcommittee updates. I do have a question for Mrs. Owen. The last meeting we were talking about with capital budgets for the rooftop air handlers at, at the Deer Hill and the Cohasset Middle, Cohasset High School Gymnasium. Did, were you able to get together with Michelle Leary and get a, a letter of interest to the MSBA?
So the window opened last week. I reached out to Michelle Monday to get some guidance on, or expertise on how to, how to actually complete the statement of interest to the, to the best ability to get it through. She was away on vacation, so she called, she emailed me today and we're going to connect you the tomorrow, Friday and start the application process.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Yes, I attended the Deer Hill School Council, which I have to say, it was just so great to see, we, we were just going over goals for the year and just, just so impressed by the goals that they're kind of meeting and exceeding amidst all of the craziness of teaching remotely and then hybrid. And it's just so impressive to see what the teachers and staff are accomplishing on top of teaching during a pandemic, which is just so nice. Also, probably people saw flyers come home, but a student at Deer Hill approached, I think Principal Sullivan said, can we have a Star Wars Day on May fourth? Because of course, May fourth, may the fourth be with you. And so the kids are doing a, you can wear Star Wars or bring your baby Yoda or whatever, or not, or have Princess Leia buns and bring in a dollar and that money is going to be donated to the food pantry. So pretty cool to have a student-driven and fun themed day on May fourth. I know we just ordered our Star Wars shirt. So Ally will be, you know, ready to go. Also, I went to the Alternative Energy Committee meeting. They will be coming to our meeting next Wednesday to give us an update on solar options and how that's progressing. Also, the talk of electric buses is still kind of in the air. It was talked about with the select board and there was some enthusiasm there. So just something to kind of keep on, you know, on our minds as, as we look forward with our bus fleet. I think, I think that's it for updates, so that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. I, I did, I guess I will update that I attended the Superintendent's School Committee Joint Student Advisory Council. I, I don't know the acronym or the, it's just, it's, a lot of those words are in there. Basically, it's a group of students that meets with Dr. Sullivan and myself. And it's just an awesome opportunity to get some direct candid student feedback. That's one of the ways in which I had already heard Caroline's concerns regarding the health course and curriculum voiced. And, and had asked her to, to, to reiterate those concerns in the public meeting because I, I thought it was important. But it's, it was wonderful and they, they spoke about a, a few different things. And I think Caroline pretty much reiterated all of them. The, the, the issue with the longer break instead of multiple short breaks. I mean, she, she did touch, touch on that today. So, but, you know, and, and in addition to the health curriculum, those were the, I think, the major points. But it's just fun. It's a fun group. I always love hearing from the kids, so, you know, but that's the update there. Caroline sort of already taken care of it, but wanted to note that, that our, you know, a representative of our body was there. That is, that's, that's all in terms of updates that I have. I guess superintendent's evaluation, we're coming up on the year end soon, I guess. Did Dr. Sullivan just disappear on us?
He did.
He did, okay.
Yeah.
Well.
I know we had. Yeah.
No, I'm just saying. So all right, well, I don't know where he went. So maybe they're having the same issues before. I, well, at this point, if there are no other updates, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the meeting minutes, which we will have some to approve at the next meeting. And and Mrs. Marr, I know that you informed me some executive session minutes and we need to look at those. I had until this moment neglected to forward them to the committee. So we obviously can't talk about them in executive session tonight, but we will do that at the next opportunity. And and then from my understanding from Mrs. St. Orange, our secretary is that there will be minutes to vote on next time. At this point, there are no topics that were not reasonably anticipated that I know of within forty-eight hours of the meeting. There is a reason to go into executive session. That is reason number three, which is strategy related to collective bargaining or strategy regarding contract negotiations of non-union personnel. So I would ask for a motion to enter into executive session at this time. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion made by Mrs. Caleri, is there a second?
Second.
Second of my Mrs. St. Orange, all in favor? Mrs. Caleri?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Marr?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Aye.
All right, Craig McClellan, so that motion unanimously carries and we will move into executive session this time. Now, logistically, I sent an email just in case everyone didn't see it. We're going to, you got an email with the leadership link, Zoom, Zoom link for the executive session. Dr. Scollins is going to stay here and hold down the fort so that we don't lose this webinar. And then we are going to go into leadership. We're going to have our executive session and then we will come back here and adjourn the meeting in open session. Okay, is everyone on board?
Yes.
All right, so let's do that. All right, so let's do that.
Hi, Dr. Sullivan. How'd you do?
Did okay. So they're still in session. They're speaking about an issue. So we, you and I should. Go back to radio silence until they come back.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can anyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, I think we're all back. Let me see if Paul's here. Paul, you there? No, Paul's not there yet.
Now named executive session. I gotta change my name.
That's all right. We're only going to be in here for a few, few seconds here. I just want to get Paul back in. He's usually. Well, we're reconvening at 8:51. From executive session. Hate to delay this too long just to. We have a quorum. So. I'll give Paul our regards. Is there a motion on the floor to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. St. Ange. Is there a second? Second of my Mrs. Caleri. All in favor? Mrs. Caleri?
Aye.
Mrs. Marr?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney's still absent, I believe. Yes, aye, Craig McClellan. The motion carries for aye votes. One absent member. We will adjourn the meeting at 8:52 PM. Thank you guys so much for your time. Really appreciate it. Thanks for all that you do.
Have a great night, everybody. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.